Welcome and thank you for joining us for the Conifer Area Council's fourth virtual town hall meeting. It's Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. I'm Christy Seaborn, and I'm happy to not only be hosting but also sponsoring tonight's town hall meeting. Tiffany and I are so grateful to be able to help support the community through Conifer Area Council. If you would also like to help support our group, we would love to talk to you about sponsorship opportunities. So what's going on around here? Tonight, we're going to start with an update from Jana Spiker with CDOT.
Hi, and good evening, everyone. I am Jana Spiker, and I'm a resident engineer with CDOT's Region One area, which encompasses the Jefferson, Gilton, and Clear Creek County areas. So thank you for having me here tonight. I will give a brief update on the Kings Valley project, and more specifically, I've received a few questions from local residents about what the potential funding, transportation funding bill would mean for the Kings Valley project. So that's kind of what I wanted to touch on this evening. So for those who are not aware of the project, CDOT has been underway of preliminary design for a proposed grade-separated interchange there at the Kings Valley in 285 intersection. And so we're hoping to address some unsafe turn movements that are there and improve the overall performance of that intersection. And so while the modernizing transportation bills funding plan is anticipated to make a real major investment in CDOT's 10-year plan, on which the Kings Valley project is listed, CDOT's confident that our ability to fund the construction of this project is not going to be reliant upon this bill passing, and that we'll be able to fully fund the project upon completion of its design and required clearances. That being said, widening of 285 to four lanes between Richmond Hill and Schaefer's Crossing, as well as improvements at Pine Junction, could be funded should that bill pass, as those projects are both listed as well on the CDOT 10-year plan, which can be found online at the CDOT website. Again, timing of the Kings Valley interchange project is currently being driven by our NEPA, or environmental reevaluation process, which is a required process to identify, analyze, and if required, mitigate any changed site conditions since the original 2004 study. On this particular project, change conditions include a newly designated historic landmark, a newly acquired conservation easement, and demolition of previously designated historic landmark, which was the firehouse. This reevaluation effort with respect to historic resources and our Section 4F process typically takes 18 to 24 months with the consultation with the State Historic Preservation Office and the Federal Highway Administration. However, due to significant amounts of planning and design work that has already been completed to date, including analyzing dozens of alternatives, CDOT's hopeful that this process can be streamlined, and more confidence in that ability will be known once our preliminary results are in. So once this process is complete, the reevaluation process, the project would receive its environmental clearance and then could advance to construction. So based on these projected timelines, CDOT's now anticipating we could begin construction in the fall or winter of 2023. Preliminary results of the environmental reevaluation will be known this summer, and at that time, our project's scope and timeline can be refined with more accuracy. We will also host a public engagement meeting this summer to discuss these results and our anticipated path forward for the project. So I do thank you for your time this evening, and we will be having a Kings Valley project website up on the CDOT's website. So more information will be posted as it comes in. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Jana. Jessica is going to be up next. She's the Public Service Manager at the Conifer Library.
Hi, yes. As Christy mentioned, I'm Jessica Paulson, and I'm the manager of our Conifer and Evergreen Libraries here at JCPL. And I'm excited to share some of what's been going on at our mountain locations these days. So beginning in March, Conifer Library expanded our hours to include Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 2:30 to 8:00 p.m. And we've also provided a hold locker, a hold locker, and returns bin at the Mountain Resource Center, so that the Conifer community can return items and pick up their reserved items at any time of day or night. And then the return's bin at Conifer High School also remains available. In addition to these in-person services, we have digital and online resources that can be checked out on any device. And have you tried our storyline yet? You can call and listen to a pre-recorded story in English or Spanish, and it's updated weekly. And then we've also got summer reading coming up really quickly. The year's theme is Tales and Tales, and it should be lots of fun. And then one more thing that I want you to know is that JCPL will be undergoing a system update this coming Tuesday, April 27th. And so we do anticipate that this is going to take most of the day, beginning at 9:00 a.m. Our resources and services are going to be unavailable, although you can still visit the library, check out books with your library card, use a computer, and then our Access 360 and Hoopla databases are the only two that will still be available until our system is back up that afternoon. So please keep an eye on our website, sign up for email messages for the latest service updates. Thanks.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate your time coming and talking with us. Next, we have Peggy Caitlin, the First Vice Chair and Director with RTD.
Hi, thank you for having me. We have a lot going on at RTD. One thing I did want to mention was that might interest some people up in the Evergreen and Conifer area is that there had been a bill introduced in the House, House Bill 21-1252, which would allow the town of Parker to deannex from the, or to see from the RTD district. And the reason for that, there's frustration among areas, and I know the mountain communities are included in those, that they're not getting their sheriff's services commensurate with sales tax receipts. And in fact, it is true. Boulder had complained about that for a while, but in fact, they're a net recipient of services in exchange for their contribution of sales tax. Douglas County and Jefferson County are the two that probably subsidize the entire region the most, and there was some concern about that. The bill sponsor PI'd the bill yesterday and wanted to work with RTD to see, you know, in other times as service grows back and ridership increases, that we might be able to reinstate service to some of the outlined communities, such as the, you know, the EV, the ES, the CV, and the CS to the mountain communities. So I just wanted to bring that up because I think there was, there's some built-up tension about not having service and paying into the district. With that said, the COVID-19, we have received quite a bit of funding relief through the three stimulus packages, the CARES Act, the CHRISA Act, and now the ARPA Act. Unfortunately, we haven't been given a lot of instruction from FTA on how those funds should be expended, although they were pretty prescriptive that it should be really to restore or to reimburse for operations that, for which we lost money. So we received 200, well, we received a couple, three different tranches. One was around $232 million, excuse me, one was $203 million, and this final one is $338 million. The fact of the matter is, the amount of money that we lost as a result of no fair collections or fewer fair collections, as well as sales and use tax collections, was greater than the amount that we received in receipts from the federal government. Some of the concerns that we have is the supplemental funding is one time. So we really need to focus on increasing ridership to increase fair recovery, and really start looking at if we get any more money with this federal funding bill that is, is the infrastructure bill, that we prioritize how we want to restore service and also take a careful look at capital projects. So that's all I have. Thank you.
And thank you, Peggy. Well, we always have a lot of questions about the planned developments in Conifer area. So to share what's happening is Senior Long Range Planner Heather Guthrillis. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. It's actually easier than it looks. It's actually just Gethrillis. And thanks for having me tonight. It's always great to be here and talk to you guys about the developments that are happening in Conifer and also what planning and zoning is doing in general. So first, I was going to just give a really brief update on regulation amendments. Currently, staff is doing a lot of different regulation updates. So I wanted to just have them all listed on this screen, and then in the PowerPoint presentation that I'll send to you so you can post with this video, they, there will be more updates on slides after this, but I don't want to take up all my time talking about all these regulation amendments when there's development cases to talk about. So I'll just flip through these slides really quick. In the Conifer area, there are 26 current development cases right now. There are three new pre-applications since the last Conifer Area Council meeting, and three rezoning updates that I wanted to update everyone on. There's no new community meetings, no subdivision updates, and no site development plan updates. So first, just to give you guys a refresher on what a pre-application is, a pre-application is a very preliminary request from somebody that might want to develop their land. It is an application with some very brief information to planning and zoning that gives an applicant a really big, a sense of the big issues that might occur as they're going through the process. And because it really gives them an idea of the big issues, sometimes people don't move forward with these to the formal application phase. Only about 40 to 50, actually, about 40, 50% don't move forward, so about 50 to 60% do. There isn't any public notice with these because it is such a preliminary process. The first pre-application that I wanted to talk to you about was in the Kings Valley area. Here's 280, let's see, 285 is on the screen, in the lower part of the screen, and then this is Kings Valley Road. This is the Kings Valley Shopping Center, and there's a proposal to rezone to allow a storage unit facility within the existing building. So the entire property is about 6.25 acres, but the portion of the building that they're looking at adding this use to is much smaller. It's only about .01 acres. The Conifer 285 area plan recommends isolated existing non-residential uses, and those types of uses are uses that acknowledge those commercial areas that are outside of the designated activity centers, and it allows for the commercial uses to continue, and if suitable, add other similar commercial uses. There, this one was just updated earlier this week. There is a community meeting that is now scheduled for this on May 11th, and there will be a link for that on our website, and I listed that on the slide. And actually, that link might not even be there yet, so you may have to wait a day or two for it to be updated. It's very new. The next pre-application that I want to talk to you about is preapplication number seven in the development report that contains all the land use cases. And this is a property off of South Turkey Creek Road. You can see 285 up on the top of the screen, and then South Turkey Creek Road is on the meandering along the bottom. The proposal is to rezone and add office space to an existing treatment center. The property is about 7.75 acres, and like the last pre-application, the community plan recommends isolated existing non-residential uses. The next preapplication is a preapplication within the Conifer Activity Center, and this is right near the King Super Shopping Center. It is just west of that. There's 285 with Dahlman Road and Sutton Road and Conifer Road. This used to be a bank and is now vacant. The proposal is a site development plan for an addition to create an auto parts retail store. And just recently, there was a rezoning proposal just west of the King Supers for the same auto parts store, actually. And the auto parts store decided that they didn't want to go in that location, so they're looking at this site instead. So we're not getting multiple of the same auto parts dealerships. It is a different auto parts retail store. So just wanted to let everyone know that. And I also wanted to let you know that because this is a site development plan, the zoning is already in place to allow for the auto parts retail store, and the plan recommendation does not apply in these situations. Next, I'll go on to the rezoning cases. Another refresher, a rezoning case is when somebody wants to change the allowed uses on their property. There are four points throughout the process that's laid out on the screen where there is public notification. There is notification and the ability to give comments at the key time of community meeting. Then, again, at the time of formal application, there's not a meeting, but there is information sent out to people in the community, and opportunity for people to send in comments. Then after that, there is notification during the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners hearings, and there is time for public testimony during both of those hearings. The first rezoning case I wanted to update you guys on is the rezoning case near Kitty Drive, 285 Kitty Drive. There's some vacant property back behind the Staples, and it is a rezoning to allow for commercial and industrial uses, including outdoor storage. It's on 5.57 acres, and the case went to the Planning Commission. Hearings were scheduled, and on April 6th, the Board of County Commissioners continued this case indefinitely at the request of the applicant to address some outstanding concerns. Since the case is continued indefinitely, there will be public notice again if hearings are rescheduled. I also wanted to note on this case that we are changing case managers. Justin Montgomery is not going to be with the county soon. He's leaving for a different position, unfortunately, and so Brittany Gator will be the new case manager for this. The next case is the one that is getting the most public interest for the last couple of years, and it is the rezoning that is just west, or sorry, east of the Safeway Center off of Light Lane and 285. This is the rezoning proposal to allow for 188 residential units, including open space and recreation in that meadow area. It's 47, approximately 47 acres, and we did have some hearings scheduled. However, the, and a partial notice went out to make sure that the community was informed, but then it was determined that the case wouldn't go to hearing just yet because the applicant wanted more time to work on their application. So at this time, there are no hearing dates proposed, but if there, if it does get rescheduled, we will make sure that public notice goes out. The last rezoning case that I wanted to talk about is a rezoning case that is off of North Turkey Creek Road near High Drive, and it is a resident, it is a rezoning for residential, three lots on 11.25 acres. They just completed their first referral, and the plan recommends one dwelling unit per 10 acres. That concludes the presentation of all the new cases. If you want to talk to any of the case managers, the contact information is on each of those slides. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather. Next, we're going to get an update from our state legislator, and we'll start with hearing from Senator Tammy Story.
Great. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with the Conifer Town Council through, through all the work that is done through, with Shirley Johnson, and of course, tonight, we have Christy Seaborn facilitating for us, and really appreciate that. It's great to see you, and thank you so much for joining us. I'd like to share a little bit about what's going on in the state legislature. It certainly has been a busy year, and we've talked about some of these things in some of our previous town councils, but just as a quick update, I think many folks know that we made some pretty dramatic budget cuts last year in the 2020 session because of the impacts of COVID and the loss of revenue. But the 2021 state budget, we just passed out of the Senate on Friday, April 9th, a couple of weeks ago, with strong bipartisan support, and it passed out of the House last Thursday, the 15th. So now it's in the hands of the Joint Budget Committee, and they will work to figure out how to reconcile the versions of the bill, that bills that came out of chamber before it's sent to the governor's office for his signature. And we certainly were able to pass a more positive budget this year because we did not, we were not facing the same types of budget cuts as we had previously. And it's, so it's much more optimistic and a very much improved economic forecast that's allowing us to restore funding for many programs that were hurt by last year's cuts. And just to give you some sense of what we are doing, we're restoring funding to institutions of higher education through about $473 million. Also, restoring some cuts that were made to transportation, $124 million there. The State Education Fund will be restored with $100 million. And we've made a number of additional investments to support the most vulnerable Coloradans in Colorado, and we are looking at $707 million for medical and long-term services and supports provided through Medicaid, an additional $100 million to state colleges and universities. We also are investing $87 million in SNAP benefits to assist with the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program and a variety of other smaller programs to help low income and also the Low Income Energy Assistance Program. And there's a number of other areas that we also are investing in that we believe have been dramatically impacted by COVID over the last year. And then we also are looking at some, some investments to, towards resiliency for Colorado, and $327 million. We're investing in state infrastructure and information technology projects. So that's incredibly important. Also, $50 million to fund legislative proposals, and we will be working on those and identifying through our legislative process which bills that we will be funding. And so that will be a tough challenge because I know we have bills with a higher price tag than $50 million, because we're all thinking big, I think, in general, in trying to address many of the demands that we believe are here in Colorado. But we're also investing $100 million in the Building Excellence Schools Today program, the BEST Fund, which is a vehicle that helps with grants to schools for construction of new facilities and general maintenance, also in renovation of existing school systems and structures. And there's $13.2 million for the wildfire stimulus package, which, as we all know, up here in the area of Conifer and Evergreen, is an ongoing threat for us, and, and we for sure want to work towards more mitigation of that to better protect our communities up here. And then just briefly, I'll share a little bit about a couple of bills that I am working on. One of these, the first one is a stimulus bill that I'm working on that will increase capacity of early childhood care and education because there has been such a shortage of licensed early childhood care across the state. And with the impacts of COVID over the last year, there were a number of these childcare centers that closed down. Many folks lost their, who had lost their jobs now may not have recovered, or they're looking to get back into the workforce, but they don't have a place necessarily for their children to go. So we are working on shoring that up. I'm also working on one that's a weatherization assistant grant program that currently exists, but we're investing additional dollars to help low-income homeowners and renters afford to help weatherize their homes or their rental properties to save them energy, and also helps reduce greenhouse gases along the way. And there's several others that I am working on that are outside of the stimulus package. As a brief update, I have mentioned in the past about a pipeline safety bill that I'm working on. It is very much PUC-heavy, the Public Utilities Commission, very much focused there to provide them with additional tools and resources to better do their work as they work to ensure the public safety relative to our pipelines that are across the state. And in other news, if you have listened before, Colorado Natural Gas, who is the service provider for natural gas primarily in this area and parts of Evergreen, as well as a number of other foothills counties on the, on the west side of the Front Range. Anyway, in any case, Colorado Natural Gas was working towards an SSIR, a System Safety Integrity rider, which would be an additional line item on customers' bills to increase what they pay in order that the company could expend that money towards mitigating and addressing pipeline issues within their district that have been pointed out to them, and they withdrew that SSIR because they're, I think they had some challenges and were up against, I think, a pretty steep climb to get that approved. So I appreciate that, that that happened, and I think customers should be grateful for that, too, that their fees will not be going up on their bills with CNG because of that. I'm also working on a college admissions use of national test scores bill that will provide that our public institutions of higher education will no longer be required to utilize national test scores for college admission. That, that policy is currently in place, but just for this current year's graduates, so the 2021 high school graduates, and we felt the policy was so important that we are in the process of moving this bill through the Senate in order to ensure that students going forward will not be required to submit national test scores for the admissions process. They can, but they will not be required to. So we're pretty excited about that bill, too. And, and then more recently, we're working on a bill to extend the timeline for educators within the kindergarten through third grade year to acquire reading training for the reading, for the READ Act. The training is required in that, in statute, and the deadline was soon approaching. And this all came about in terms of setting up the training and being able to access the training while we were in the midst of COVID, and the training is pretty significant in terms of the amount of investment that's required. And educators, we felt really needed some additional time in order to get through the 45 hours of training, and so that will be extended for a year to the fall of next year of 2022. So that bill, we hope, will be finished moving through the Senate very shortly. So I will wrap up my, my comments now. There's always plenty more to share, but I'm grateful for the opportunity. And if anyone has any questions and wishes to reach out to me, feel free to, you know, check on the General Assembly website. You can find my email address there and my office phone number, and I'm always grateful to hear from you if you have some ideas or thoughts or concerns that you'd like to share. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it. And next, we'll be hearing from Representative Lisa Cutter.
Hello, hello. Thank you so much, Christy, and thanks, as always, for the opportunity to be here and connect. Senator Story always does a wonderful job of setting the stage with what's going on generally. So I'll try and touch on a few different areas. We, the other thing we've been dealing with a lot is the, the anticipation of the federal stimulus coming down the pike, and we expect to get here in Colorado right around $4 billion. So some of you may have heard about or participated in the Build Back Stronger, Build Back Stronger Colorado Listening Tour. The governor convened several groups, or more than several, multiple groups throughout the states, different The governor convened several groups or more than several multiple groups throughout the states, different interest areas and. You know geographical areas to talk about the vision for how we build back stronger. And what we can do better and really what we could do to transform Colorado. After we've all everyone throughout the United States, throughout the world has had such a tough past year. So I love that, you know, the legislature and the governor are trying to be forward thinking. And Senator Story mentioned resiliency, that's so important and a lot of legislation is focused on those areas. And we're just looking at ways that we can help Coloradans get back on their feet and really do do better things and build build back stronger, just like it says. So I participated in several of those listening sessions and it's been really enlightening. So we're we're but that's up in the air, how those dollars will be distributed, that's to be determined. So we'll look forward to that certainly a lot will hopefully go to education, the environment, all the things that we value and love in Colorado. It has been a interesting session in that normally talking to you in April, we'd be we'd be anticipating. Being done and wrapping up by early May. But because we took a month off of COVID, you know, rest to make sure we got vaccinated and and sort of had everything in order to go back safely. Our session has been extended. We're not quite sure when that will be done. But probably sometimes in late May or early early to mid June. And then I look forward to getting back out in the community. I know Senator Story and and Commissioner Del Kemper and Commissioner Kerr and I have regular town halls. And certainly would welcome any other officials that want to join us and say hi to everyone. But we have regular town halls and we've been doing them on Zoom. So like everything is done these days. So we're looking forward, I know I speak for all of us in saying that we're looking forward to the time when we can get out this summer. And meet people in person, maybe do something in a park. We're discussing maybe doing a summer town hall in a park somewhere outside where we can we can all connect with people, which is what we love to do. That's why we're here is to hear from people and and connect and you can't replace that face to face connection. So along those lines, pin this, our next town hall will be May 15th. I know you can find out about it on, we'll be posting things on all of our Facebook pages and sending out. So just look for that, it should be, we should, you know, should be pretty easy to find. Or reach out to any of us if you have questions about that. Hopefully we'll see you there for that Zoom event. Let's see, this summer also, I'm looking forward to serving on, in fact, I'll be chairing the Wildfire Matters Committee. And I'm so excited about that. We all talk about that a lot and I see we have some guests from some from the 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 fire districts here tonight. And I'm really looking forward to that. I'll be doing a lot of work ahead of that, convening stakeholder groups and talking to. To lots of people in the community involved in that space about how. What we need to do, who we need to talk to, how we can really make the most of our time this summer. Looking at wildfire in Colorado and making the biggest impact. I am really excited about it and taking it very seriously because I know it's a really important thing for our state. So regular things that I'll that I'm doing right now, some of the the regular bills I've my normal legislation that I've been working on. Is focused on mental health. That's a big issue for me. I'm sponsoring. The night, there's a 988 suicide hotline nationally. And we're bringing that local, we're bringing it to Colorado. Of course, anyone can call 988 no matter where you are. But we're working to bring to staff that and bring resources here to Colorado. So you actually get people in Colorado when you call that line here. So that's one thing I'm working on, a behavioral health disaster mitigation bill to. Just when there, when things like tragedies like happened in Boulder recently. Behavioral health professionals are really overworked and necessary. It's really important to support community in that way. So this will just formalize and shore up some of those supports so that that all the systems are working together to provide behavioral health. Support and counseling and whatever's needed for the community, including the professionals working in that space. I'm working a lot on environmental issues as I always focus on. Working to reduce egregious plastic, some of the worst plastic offenders in our state, single use plastic bags and styrofoam. Trying to reduce those things, help our environment. And wildfire, a piece of wildfire legislation that I'm working on. Commissioner Del Kemper has been super helpful with that. I know that the commissioners are supporting that and it would be a great thing for our communities. It would provide grant funding for our communities to to draw down to do mitigation work against any natural disaster. But primarily wildfire, of course, in our area. So I'm really excited about that bill. I will be working to provide, we're working to provide more food assistance. Depending on how the federal stimulus comes down and where we're going to, you know, how we work out, how we get those dollars. But I'm working with some groups to provide more support for people that are hungry. There's far too many people that are still experiencing food insecurity, so I am looking forward to that one. And that's just broad brush. That's what I've been up to, but I always love to hear from people. Please reach out, get on my newsletter if you're not receiving that, cutterforcolorado.com. And you can just, there's a contact button and you just pull that down and it should be easy to find a a subscription tab there. And yeah, call my office. You can find me on the on the legislative website along with Senator Story. And reach out to our office anytime, but I'm looking forward to connecting more in person this summer. And always appreciate the opportunity to to talk with y'all at these events. So thank you all.
And thank you, Representative Cutter. Unfortunately, 2021 is predicted to be another horrible year for wildfire. So to give us some information, we have from the Elk Creek Fire Department, Chief Jacob Ware.
Hi, everybody. So I'm going to try and share my screen. We'll see how well that works. What I wanted to share tonight is some of the resources that we've kind of gathered and developed for mitigation of wildland fire preparedness for the residents of the area. We have launched a new website. It launched on April 1st. And we're utilizing it for our chipping program signup as well as our home assessment signup. And it's it's got a lot of great resources for the community. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and launch this. It's available through our website, elk creekfire.org, as well as Inner Canyon's website. Under the wildfire tab. Let's see. Okay, that is actually not going to work. Captain Yellen, would you be able to share that? We do have a contingency plan. We've developed this website between the two of us. Perfect, thank you. We've developed this website between Inner Canyon and us. And the idea was to try and gather everything in one place. So people don't have to scroll through a bunch of different links. And it's a lot easier to look at all the projects and resources we have. So the first screen that comes up is kind of our splash screen with the the most important parts of our our program. So we have wildfire prepared home assessments in that program is modeled after. Boulder's doing it, a number of other places are doing the program. We started doing it as well as Evergreen and Inner Canyon. Genesee, and I believe we're talking to several of our fire protection districts. What it is, is you actually sign up for it and a mitigation specialist will come out to your house and give an assessment. Of your property, your house and the area. And we'll give you a very detailed report. There is an associated cost, it's $100 and that's kind of built in to help cover the cost and the fees. Also on this page, we've got a lot that talks about mitigation. So slope home ignition zone practices. A lot of the science that's come out in the last few years, it has talked about. Fire mitigation as well as home ignition. It's not from the catastrophic fire. It's not from the big fire, the the huge great conflagration you see on the news. It's the ember cast from the fire that's one ridge over or ahead of the flaming front. And so what we've put on there is it kind of talks about that. Then at the very bottom. And we can't go into this, we probably would cram all the bandwidth up and mess it up, but the IBHS website. The insurance for business website and home safety, they they've come up with an ember generator and they've been doing a lot of. Research to see how homes burn. And then once you discover how they burn, how you can mitigate that. And that's some of the science that we're pushing with our real with our home assessment program. And a lot of them are smaller things that you could that individual homeowners can do that have been proven to actually. Reduce the probability of your dwelling burning. The next thing is our chipping program. I think everybody's aware of that. We launched it on April 1, we were up to 470 signups. That's through this page here. It's got the pile guidelines. The signups changed a little bit. We actually have had to limit several things. We limit each resident to 15 piles per address. But other than that, everything else is about the same. We're going to close it. Once we hit 600 applicants or April 30th, I think we're going to hit that. Once we finish those up, we're going to reopen it again and move on to the next phase of chipping. The next is community resources, or I'm going to skip over that. Captain Yellen's going to talk about that. We've got a number of exciting programs going on between the two districts. That he'll be able to explain and how to get people involved in a lot of the projects. So our crews, we we've expanded our programs. We we initially started with a basically it was it's called an initial attack squad. It was it was several firefighters and it's grown into two programs. We have a wildfire suppression module, which is a 10 person wildland firefighting module. These are specialized firefighters. They're specializing in wildland urban interface firefighting. They work hand in hand with our fuels crew, which specializes in hazard fuel reduction. They work on cutting projects, chipping projects, pile burning projects as well as fire suppression. The Elk Creek Fire Suppression Module is the first group that was built. And this year is when we added the four person fuels crew and that's hosted by Inner Canyon. They are going to work, it's a cross boundary collaboration, so they work in both of our districts. They're both shared resources for suppression as well as fuels management. And the last tab we have, I'm keeping on my timer. I don't want to be that guy. Is a lot of our upcoming projects. We have a lot of things going on right now. One of the things we tried to do is get a map where people can actually see where we're working. So we have a map right here and these icons show our cutting projects as well as our burning projects. You can click on an icon, it will have a brief description of the project. And what that is, is if you're in the area, if you if you live around it, you for instance, see smoke or you're curious, you see us working around there. This will explain kind of what's going on, the scope and scale of the project and the dates and when they're going to be finished. And then as we scroll down, and that's going to be for obviously both both districts. And now we're working on the planning. So while land division planning is big, we we have a lot of things going on. Right now, what we're working on is updating our CWPP as a lot of the districts are up here. We're actually using the Forest Stewards Guild, which is the same vendor that Platte Canyon has used, Evergreen has used. We're trying to get a continuity of information between all the fire protection districts. That way the same mapping and a lot of the same analysis. So with continuity of data, we'll have a much bigger picture of what we look, what we look like for wildfire risk and how we can prepare for it across the front range. So our CWPP has a bunch of different components. I'm not going to read them all here. Everybody can read them. I encourage everybody to go to the website, click on the links. We also have our older web, our old CWPP. It's an extremely dated document. It was good for the time, but with all the new science. And essentially changing weather, it's time to update it. So our current CWPP as well as Inner Canyon, it's up there, you can see what those are. Right now, we also put up our preliminary mapping product. These are interesting and you know, they show what we all know, but it is. Fairly stark to look at some of these statistics and some of the analysis that they're they're putting forward. It goes in, we're also going to do be doing some evacuation analysis that we're going to be working with the county. In an effort to increase the evacuation planning for our district as well as most of the other districts are doing the same. And then the other big map, we put this down here is the rate of spread. The rate of spread is a predicted, a prediction of what fire would do during an extreme weather event. You can see the weather, you can get in here and you can you can look at the map yourself. But it is pretty telling of the area that we live in. So that was a very quick and dirty overview of our website. There are a number of tools in it. Please go to it, check it out. Any questions, concerns, you can always reach me. I'm available through our website. My email is on there. We have a lot of, you know, our fire stations at the top of Richmond Hill. Reach out, let me know. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our wildland captain Benjamin Yellen, who's going to go over our community involvement plans.
Thanks, Chief. As he was saying, we have a lot going on in a in a still fairly small fire protection district. But we have been able to collaborate on resources with Inner Canyon on an additional program that we've started this year. We're calling it the Community Ambassador Program. We're modeling it off of some successful programs across the country. But basically what it is, is it helps us promote education outreach and community organizing on a neighborhood basis. So we started in the winter and we reached out to people that we've been working with for quite a bit. In terms of the chipping program and other hazard mitigation programs. And we made them part of the volunteer corps at both Elk Creek and Inner Canyon. So all of the selected community ambassadors are actually volunteers within our organizational structure. And they're going to be pushing more material out to the community, organizing their neighborhoods. In order to get more planning done for landscape scale mitigation. While organizing homeowners to promote our wildfire prepared program and help them get started on the work. So what I really want to show you is our map. We have another interactive map here. And you can come to the website and find your community ambassador. You can email them and start talking to them depending on your level of interest. They might be even tag you to help them out a little bit. So they're creating teams to help them, as any volunteer organization knows. We're trying to not let them burn out so quickly. So go find your ambassador, try and help them out. If you don't have an ambassador near you currently, give us an email. You can find Julia Kalish, who's our new wildfire mitigation specialist. And you can give her an email and we can start the process of seeing if you can be a a community ambassador for the Elk Creek and Inner Canyon program. Thank you.
Well, that sounds like an amazing source of information. Thank you both so much. And our final guest tonight is Jefferson County Commissioner Leslie Del Kemper.
Great. Thank you so much, Kristi. We're going to try to see if we can get the PowerPoint up hopefully and see how that goes. But first let me thank, well, Kristi's helping me with that. We really want to thank Kristi for facilitating tonight's conversation, the Conifer Area Council and those of you who are joining us. For our conversation. So much to share with you today. And like Chief Ware, I'm going to start that timer as well. Because I know that we want to kind of stick with our time. I do have to give a huge shout out to Chief Ware and Ben for the incredible work that they did on the website that they presented to us just a moment ago. And also special thanks to Chief Ware, who serves on our Jeffco wildfire task force. Not only serves on the task force, but also chairs our revenue streams committee, which is an important part of the mix. We heard Senator Story and Representative Cutter talk about the importance of funding mitigation and other efforts to reduce wildfire risk in our community to keep everyone safe. By the way, the town hall that Representative Cutter mentioned on May 15th is focused completely on wildfire mitigation. It's at 9:00 AM and we're going to have Dan Gibbs, who's the executive director of the Natural Resources Department. Speak as well as Chief Sherlock from Inner Canyon and Cindy Latham from Evergreen. So it should be a great conversation. Well, we're going to move through these slides fairly quickly. I thought it might be good to spend a little bit of time talking about the economic landscape in Jeffco. How are we doing as we look at COVID response and recovery? How are we addressing those issues through the new American Rescue Plan? What does that look like? And then a quick update on COVID. So Kristi, we can go ahead and start moving through those slides. Quick look at just doing the numbers. What do our economic development data points tell us right now? If we look at our unemployment rate, the good news is that compared to where we were at at in in March through May. Of last year, our numbers are going down. So right now Jeffco's unemployment rate is 6.3%. And that is down. It's moving in the right direction. We are right in the middle of the Colorado and the nation. We're a little bit below Colorado, I'm sorry, a little bit below Colorado and a little bit above the the national average. Consumer spending is another data point that we look at pretty closely to tell us just how healthy our economy is. Things are also improving in that area. We're at 1.5% in terms of consumer spending. That's a little bit below where we were, but the overall trend is also moving in the right direction. Small business revenue is also an area that we look. Small business revenue is also an area that we look at because it tells us more about patterns of consumer spending, are people buying? And we see still a mixed bag. For Jeffco, we are 21.5% below where we have been. That's a little bit better than the state at 28.5%, but we still have more work to do in that area. So how are we addressing all of these issues? We're, we're addressing them in a couple of ways. In terms of the CARES Act dollars, Jeffco received $101.7 million in CARES Act money. We immediately worked hard to thoughtfully and strategically push those dollars out to the cities, which received about almost $30 million. The county also tapped some of those dollars, but we also pushed out dollars to businesses in the amount of $13.6 million, nonprofits, special districts, bulk food, Jeffco Public Schools, to ensure that they didn't have to cut in half the grab-and-go meal sites during the summer. So for example, we were able to use those CARES Act dollars to award 660 grants to businesses that were impacted by COVID-19, including businesses in Conifer. We help food pantries like Mountain Resource Center serve more than 389% more families. You heard Representative Cutter talk a little bit earlier about the need and certainly Senator Story about how we're working to help families who may be struggling during this time. How about that American Rescue Plan? You've probably heard about that. The CARES Act dollars had, had to be expended by the end of last year. Jeffco is expected to receive $114 million. Those dollars will all go directly to the county, and then the cities across Jeffco will receive about $46 million. Those are larger cities like Arvada and Lakewood. The timing of the funds, a little different than the CARES Act. They can be spent through 2024, so wait about three and a half years to really think and work with our community and other elected officials and leaders, nonprofit leaders, our chambers, to think about how best to leverage those dollars. The dollars can only be used for, there are certain criteria for how the dollars can be used, including aid to households, small businesses, nonprofits, investments in water, sewer, and other infrastructure. Please look soon to the jeffco.us website because we're going to conduct a community needs assessment. We want to hear from you. What are your priorities for those dollars? And you can follow that, that conversation at www.jeffco.us/arpA. And I'm going to wrap up with just one or two quick slides on COVID because I'm about running out of time. The Jeffco vaccine, really good news on that front. Thank you for getting out there, getting your shot in the arm. Those appointments are becoming increasingly accessible. And we're very proud to report that through the efforts of Jeffco Public Health and our health partners, 59.2% of Jeffco residents 16 years and older have received at least one dose of the vaccine. And Jefferson County placed second in the state in getting vaccines into the arms of our residents in, in the last couple of weeks. So we're proud about that. There are some concerns, however. Our public health directors and others are saying that Colorado appears to be entering a fourth wave. But in fact, our public health director said we are in a fourth wave. So there's some data points we're watching very closely, we're concerned about. Jefferson County is in the blue category. As you may know, the governor dissolved the state dial. But we ask you to continue to do all those things that you've been doing over the last year plus. Wear your masks, socially distance, make sure you get your vaccine if you haven't received it yet. And if you have any questions, you can always contact me at ldahkem@jeffco.us. That's L-D-A-H-L-K-E-M@jeffco.us. And thanks again for allowing us the opportunity to share this information with you tonight.
And thank you, Commissioner. It's always nice to hear from you. Before we wrap up the night, I do want to give a briefing on the Conifer Library survey that went out to the community. We had 560 people take the survey, and based on these results, the community has over, is overwhelmingly supporting a standalone library in Conifer. To see the full results, please visit coniferarea council.org/communityvision/conifersurveyresults. And we'll be sending out more information soon through our email blast to explain how we've used this information and how the library board is responding. I would also like to mention that we just opened up a trail survey for the community. If you aren't on the email list, you didn't receive the survey. So please go to coniferarea council.org, contact us, or visit our Facebook page to take the survey. And as you've heard, excuse me, as you've heard tonight, there's so much going on in the, in Conifer. So please tell your friends, family, and neighbors to watch this very important town hall meeting. And thank you to everyone for your participation and for keeping our community informed.